Meeting of the Nurey Planning Board. And first thing on the agenda is attendance, and there's three of us here. And we were all here at the last meeting.
We should note that Randy was absent.
Yes, Randy, the ultimate is not here, nor was he here the last meeting. Review of voting and eligibility. We were all here the last meeting, so we're here. So we are eligible to vote at this meeting. Number three on the agenda, minutes of the prior meeting, which was May 17th. And, vote.
You have the public hearing and the minutes.
Yes, and we also have the minutes of the public hearing, which we'll vote on separately.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to do the minute meeting, minutes of the prior meeting first, right?
Yes.
In the public hearing.
So in the meeting minutes, Ted pointed out, I have a typo in the bottom paragraph on page one, third line down toward the right of the page. The applicant, I should say, was asked for his opinion, but the W is missing.
Oh, yes.
So I'll make that correction.
Is that amended the minutes?
Was that the only amendment?
That's your correction. I saw it. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Wednesday, May 17th Planning Board meeting as amended.
I'll second that. We move and second that we approve the minutes of the May 17th, 2023 meeting as amended. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
And now the minutes of the public hearing.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of the public hearing held on Wednesday, May 17th, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
I will second that motion. We move and second that we approve the minutes of the public hearing of May 17th, 2023. All those in favor? One, two, three. Business. Continued review of Sunday River Skiway Corporation. R-17 lot 2A3 and R-13 lot 13. We also have a couple of letters here from Sunday River. Well, actually, yeah. And should we, how do we get these into the minutes? Or do we?
You can.
You can read them into the record because it's being recorded.
Yes.
Would you say, Brooks?
You could read them into the record because it's being recorded.
Should I do that, gentlemen?
Should we just make a motion that the correspondence be added to the minutes of this meeting?
Yeah, you can refer to the date and subject.
So I do not have to?
Read aloud the whole thing.
Read aloud the entire?
Well, for freedom of access, it would be nice if you read it.
I agree, but if anybody was interested, they could also come and read them in person.
And I can email them to people for freedom of expression.
Or we can come to the meeting and you can read them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the correspondence that we received from Sunday River memorandum addressed to you, John Gauthier from Peter Roberts, professional engineer at Sunday River Corporation, subject Marahole, application 23-275, public hearing comments, the date of May 30th, 2023, along with the addendum to that memorandum, which is a separate memorandum from, addressed to the Nurey Planning Board from Joseph Alazio Jr., professional.
Aloisio.
Aloisio, excuse me. Professional engineer dated May 26th, 2023, on snowmaking runoff be attached to the minutes of this hearing. If the board doesn't want me to hear it, why do I need it?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the letter from Peter Seams, Peter Roberts, I'm sorry, addressed to the Nurey Planning Board, and also the addendum to it be?
Memorandum.
Memorandum, okay. Be included in the minutes?
Be included, attached to the minutes.
Attached to the minutes of this week's meeting. All those in favor?
Before we do that, we wait, any discussions that we want to have, boys?
I didn't hear a second.
A second.
Oh, sorry, okay.
That's all right. I read this, and Peter Roberts pretty much addressed all the topics that were brought up concerning this project in the public hearing, one by one. And I thought he did a good job. Am I allowed to say that?
Yeah, you did.
I did, did.
So can we, is there discussion on this? Can we have discussion on this?
That's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
Okay, so I would like to, I guess, ask a question or state what I noticed about it. It talks about what Joe's letters about snowmaking effects are wrong. Storm water flow increases due to snowmaking operations included with this response memo from Sunday River's former engineer, Aloisio. We summarize the findings of research provided in response to similar questions raised by the planning board in 1998. That was 25 years ago. So my question is, has nothing changed? Or is there new information out there? Or should this be updated or re-investigated for present day? I mean, I don't know. I'm not an engineer, so that's why I'm asking. But it seemed like 25 years ago. It's a long time ago, and maybe things have changed since then. Big man?
Well, the, most of the memos, most of the reports that Joe had on file were done by a hydrogeologist in Vermont named Jeff Nelson, who we actually still do work with, who was hired by ASC to do similar types of reports regarding like snowmaking expansion at the resorts that ASC owned in Vermont. So we've got one from Sugar Bush, one from Chemo, one from Snow. And so Jeff kind of states the assumptions that he makes and then states the conclusions that he makes from his modeling. And so the conclusions basically were that there will be an increase in snow melt runoff, but the increased rate of snow melt runoff is very small compared to storm flow. So for example, in one of the reports, the maximum snow melt runoff that he calculated was about half of the two-year storm flow from rain. So he concluded that as far as like erosion and scour issues go, that that wouldn't be an issue at that resort. There's two more reports that I've seen that were done more recently. One was in 2003, and one was, it was at Stowe in Vermont also. And then one in 2012, I think it was done by Army Corps of Engineers at like a very small ski area in Minnesota, Wisconsin. So the report at Stowe basically compared Stowe Resort to a different aspect of Mount Mansfield that did not have any development on it. And so they concluded that there were some increases in snow melt runoff and some increases in turbidity. But they were pretty minor in the order of, I think the turbidity was more pronounced, but the storm flow due to snow melt runoff was like a four to five percent increase, if I remember correctly. I didn't bring a printed copy. And then there was another report that was done in the Midwest by the Army Corps of Engineers. So it's like the parameters of the experiment were quite a bit different, but they were analyzing snow melt runoff compared to a computer model of what the assumed snow melt runoff would have been before the resort was built. And so their increases were a little bit higher than the one at Mount Mansfield, but they also state a lot of assumptions because they don't know exactly what the pre-development condition would have been.
So the runoff has increased a little, but the sustain is longer?
That was my understanding from the conversations I've had with Joe in the past. But yeah, and that's also supported by the reports. So typically what they were seeing was an extra week of snow melt runoff and the peak flow going up by up to 25%. But when they were questioned about whether that would increase scour in the stream channels, they said that that increased snow melt runoff was still quite a bit less than storm flow from rain events. So they didn't expect that it would be a scour issue.
So is that in relation to the statement that it was found that clearing of trees may advance snow melt by a week? Is that where that comes from?
Yeah, there's, there's different reports that were done by the U.S. Forest Service that were not specifically looking at resorts, but they were looking at clear cuts. And so the clear cut reports also supported the idea that you would, that you would extend your snow melt runoff season because of compaction and some other things.
The resort itself does not have any recent studies?
No, there's not been any studies done at Sunday River.
Nor have you, nor have you taken the total amount of water pumped up the hill and made assumptions for evaporation, sublimation, and melt during the season and come up with an equivalent to inches per acre?
Yeah, I mean, you could basically go backwards through Jeff Nelson's process and assume all those things. Assume number.
But that would bring up the date, you know, a little bit of information. I mean, I'm just curious.
What's the outcome that the board's looking for?
Well, I was just curious. It just seemed like, as I say, 1998, 25 years ago, and you know, for, for something. So does that 1998 information still hold true in 2023?
I don't know of any studies that were done in the last 12 years nationwide. And I think a lot of the studies that were done by Jeff are referred to by a lot of the other resorts as kind of the baseline of what their assumptions are. But the newest one that I could find on the internet was in 2012, or published in 2012.
And I'm still making, it's probably too much of a specialty niche to be covered by HydroCAD, I assume?
Yeah, I think Jeff made a lot of assumptions about snow depth. And then I think the Army Corps of Engineers in the 1950s had published some methods for calculating how fast snow would melt. And they were very complicated because they took a lot of different weather.
The variables have to be insane.
I think that's what Jeff said in his report was the variables were too many to make it practical. So he took an assumed number and used that in his, in his study.
That's what engineers do.
Yeah.
They make us.
So I guess the conclusions that Joe came up with after reviewing all those memos, I agree with. And also I think the, the middle bullet that he says where placing snowmaking on the trails did not increase the rate of runoff. I think there, in the reports, there's an increase in the rate of snow melt runoff, but the peak runoff from rain events is still great, much greater than the snow melt runoff would be.
You ready?
I don't know. I was just curious.
I'm satisfied.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that the two documents from Sunday River, one from Joe Aloisio and the second one from Peter Roberts, be added to the minutes of tonight's meeting.
Attached to the minutes.
Attached.
Okay.
Added, attached. All those in favor?
One, two.
Three. What's next, boys?
So, Mr. Chairman, as of the last meeting, we were working on the criteria of approval for application 23-275. And there were three individual subsections that were tabled. One on erosion, one on storm water, and the final one on conformity to all local ordinance and plans. Also, in previous meetings, just to recap, we reviewed the applicant's request for a waiver of having all state and federal permits issued and in hand prior to our approval. And that was voted down. The waiver was not approved. Also, due to, following the UDRO, we had 30 days after the, following the public hearing to either approve or deny, approve with conditions or deny the application. And that 30 days ends next week. So by the end of this meeting, the board either needs to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or if the applicant is in agreement, we can extend the 30-day period to a useful, usable period of time.
I believe you're correct.
As much as my gray hair will remember.
Stop right now. We have a document from Garland Palmer dated 1 June 23, concerning this project. And it goes A through U. And the only one, the only criteria that Garland Palmer finds that it does not meet is conformity with local ordinances and plans. Everything else is either meets or it's not applicable. Thoughts?
It explains that in the, explains the reasoning for that.
Oh. Thank you.
I have to beat the CEO to correct you. No, it's not Garland Palmer, it's Garland Palmer.
Well, as it had been pointed out to me, there's a, there's a note out here. Just criteria noted as does not meet are discussed as follows. U, conformity with local ordinances and plans. The applicant has requested waiver from requirement that state permits be received prior to town approval. They have asked that the state permit be made in condition of approval. We have no technical objection to this request. And you just did that.
At a previous meeting, we had considered the waiver, and the board unanimously opposed granting the waiver.
Okay. Peter, you have got approval of the state.
No, unfortunately we haven't. My request, though, we did have two that were tabled, is that we're working through those and then talking about the last one that Garland Palmer said was not, did not meet.
Waiver, did you request?
Not waivers, criteria for approval.
Erosion and storm water.
Yeah.
And then conformity, all other category. Yeah, it doesn't fit that.
And so after the, the motion about not granting the waiver, a motion was made to table review of any other waivers until this meeting, regarding this paragraph.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But that one waiver was denied.
Yeah.
So I think we need to review the criteria approval, B, erosion.
Okay.
And then we need to do, oh, storm water.
Okay.
Peter, is there any indication at all from DEP as to when you're going to get satisfaction?
Yeah, I got an email on the 23rd saying we have it tomorrow. And then I kept calling the guy that's coming up to voice now, so I finally called his supervisor. Oh, yeah, I called his supervisor, she didn't answer. I called the DEP director from another office, and she told me he'd been out of state dealing with a family vacancy for two weeks. And I said, okay, so he's supposedly back on Monday, but let's see. And I had very, very high hopes.
So you have it, but you don't?
I had very high hopes I was coming in with it today, but my hopes were shattered.
You have it, but you don't. Okay, section five, criteria for approval. B, proposed development will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or infraction of the land's capacity to hold water, so that dangerous unhealthy condition results. Ted?
Yes?
What have you been doing then?
Well, we don't have DEP's findings yet. I don't know if that plays any condition in our review of this or not. Although Garland Palmer has something that meets. Our consultant seems to be comfortable with it.
My consultant says it meets it. So it's not going to create any more escalation of X in their column. We would think that hopefully we will review that.
Peter, do you have revised plans?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was looking for the ordinance too, because I think there was some guidance in there.
For such an important topic, it's rather brief.
Yeah, I was just going to see what it said.
Page 21.
21. Is it page 21 or sheet 21? Okay. Yeah, we have to look it up. Got you. The Garland Palmer's original memo asked for a couple of things specifically with regard to scour protection of the outlets of the culverts. So we made those changes on the plans, and I think that's why he moved that to the meets, the criteria column. He also asked for a reference in the notes to some more language in the DEP's spec for erosion control mulch. And there's, I think there's one other thing he asked for that we added to the plans.
Something on sheet six in section D3?
Yeah, I think that was.
On your plan?
Yeah, we were adding, added some wording. I think they have this memo from last year.
I have that right here. Erosion, the erosion control mulch berm reference in section B.2 of the main DEP Erosion and Sedimentation BNP manual for installation of the berm. We recommend that section D3 also be referenced for the composition of the berm material. It's a, and you replied, this note has been edited on sheet six to include section D3?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'd reference the section that tells you how to put the berm in. Do you want it also to reference the section that tells you what the mulch is made out of? If that makes sense.
That was the end of stack, you probably could have filled the floor.
There were also a number of comments in the public hearing that brought up erosion. So if you guys have more questions about my responses to any of those, we can go through those too.
You can hang on to that.
Okay.
You're gonna need it.
Want to go back to that? Peter?
Say it again.
Do you want to go back to those comments?
No, I'm just making an offer if there was anything unclear in there, because there were a lot, several comments about erosion.
The town will also be having a third-party inspector on this project. So that will also catch and remedy erosion problems during, of course, construction as well as the company's engineers' weekly reports that are forwarded to the town in addition to pre- and post-remedy reports. I'm trying to do it to me. When we're talking about response to the public hearing, also in the public hearing, there was a request from Mahusup Wynn's own HOA for time for them to conduct their own study or review. And we have representative of the HOA tonight in a meeting here. The board may want to ask if they have found any answers to that or if they need more time or if they are okay with.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I believe you are from the HOA. Can you state your name, sir?
I'm Tom Ketchum. I'm from away. We've contacted three different engineering firms. One- One declined to take the job due to potential conflicts with Sunday River. The second decided it was not the service they would provide. And Goral Palmer has decided to give us an estimate next week. We have not objected to the project, we just want to do our due diligence. We think it's important that we have this engineering opinion on our own just for down the road to protect the association. Last time I asked for time to complete or not complete analysis. We're not going to have it completed within the 30-day window, but that's where we're at.
And for full disclosure, Goral Palmer did ask me on our walkthrough if there was a conflict of interest from, out from the town's perspective, if they did work with the HOA. And I said, no. I didn't see any reason that that would be a conflict.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think so.
Tom, is this review establishing a baseline? Or is it in direct relation to this application?
So the association wants to understand what its stormwater drainage implementation is and to assess the data that Peter has shared with us. I've looked at the data. It'd be wrong for me to give an opinion, because I'm not an engineer, but I'm not standing here with my hair on fire. We believe it's important for us to understand what's coming our way. And we believe it's important to have a professional opinion down the road should we have an issue.
Just out of curiosity, Peter, do you have a problem with Goral and Palmer working for them? Seeing they're already working for us?
No, I think after I met Will and his guys, I feel comfortable working with them and their reputation kind of in my community is good. And they already have reviewed the project. So in my mind, that gives the HOA probably a financial advantage, because they're not going to be reviewing it from ground zero. They're starting at some point where they already are familiar with the project. I guess the other statement I wanted to make that unrelated to your question. If the timing of this study for Goral Palmer to do for the HOA doesn't work out with the approval of the permit, we're in good correspondence with the HOA. And we're going to continue to do our best to work through any issues that might come up out of the report.
Tom, so would it be correct to say that part of your concern is from an existing subdivision called Merrill Hill? And its engineering and stormwater management? As well as any potential impact from this new project called Merrill Hill lift number two?
So I think that's correct to say. I'm not here to state that anything untoward happened during the first phase. I'm here to say that this is a large project that will change the stormwater flow. And I have seen the data. And in order to have an equal footing with Peter and Sunday River, I think it's important that we have a professional opinion. We're not trying to hold up the project, we're trying to protect our rights down the road.
Thank you. We think this is complete and we have a public hearing. And we have 30, they had 30 days to approve it. That 30 days lapses in 12 days, right?
It's next week sometime, next Wednesday probably, or thereabouts.
Something like that. Before our next meeting? Yes, before our next meeting. It's probably safe to say that Goral and Palmer, Goral and Palmer.
Goral Palmer, there's no A in.
Oh, okay. Won't have a study done for the HOA within 12 days? Or no?
By the state assumption.
Yeah. I hate to say ignore the whole thing, but I think legally we have to.
I think like the statement I tried to make was geared towards the fact that we're not ignoring the problem and we're open to meeting with these guys. And I don't know, you know, I'd like to see this not hold up the permit process. And if it helps comfort you in moving forward with this criteria or the whole application, we're in open communication with Tom and the board and we're going to keep working on this with them.
I mean, timing is certainly an issue, but everything Peter just said is absolutely correct. There is an open dialogue and if we have professional opinion, we can have that dialogue. Certainly as difficult as you get into a project to make adjustments. But we have that channel, we have that commitment, and that's sufficient for us.
Okay. Something like that, yeah, you can take a look at it.
Well, no, it needs to be added to the minutes.
Okay. Okay, I'm stammering, I don't know where to go from here. Kind of like this little stammering.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that section five subsection B erosion, the proposed development will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land capacity to hold water so that dangerous unhealthy condition results has been dutifully reviewed and met by the applicant.
I'll second that. Let's remove the second of that. Section five, B, erosion has been met. All those are there.
One, two, three.
Okay, and the other one is U.
No.
Oh.
No.
Oh, stormwater. Oh, okay, stormwater. Stormwater is even shorter than B. Stormwater just says, the proposed development will provide for adequate stormwater management. And our engineering folks said, stormwater, oh. Provide sizing calculations for proposed culverts. And.
Something read as Peter's response is.
Peter's response is, we reduced our hydro CAD model to just include proposed culverts and their subcatchments. We also included the post-development watershed sheet from the DEP permit set. Okay? And B, there are three 30-inch diameter by 90-foot long culverts shown on the north northernmost trail. The culvert outlets appear to discharge at the top of the proposed rating slope. Provide additional information slash details on how the slope slash channel below the culvert outlet will be protected from erosion. And Peter's response was, see culvert apron detail on sheet six. We added a note to extend riprap apron to toe of slope.
Yeah, originally it said 10 times the culvert diameter. So we just added a note that said 10 times the culvert diameter or two toes or.
So that's on your new, on your new documents that you have on your left?
I don't know.
No, those are all documents, I didn't know if you needed them.
Oh, okay.
And then there's a C.
What?
I probably, I don't have it.
Um, let's see. C, there's a 24-inch diameter by 80 by 60-foot long culvert near the intersection of the two southernmost trails that appears to convey drainage from a new ditch. The existing drainage channel that crosses the southernmost trail does not appear to be culverted and appears to be diverted into the new ditch. On the downstream end, a new channel should be excavated to safely direct drainage back to the original drainage channel. And Peter's response was, thank you for clarifying this location. We tweaked the grading to show a channel which will be part of the extended riprap apron noted above. Peter nods his head.
And Goral Palmer on their next review marks it as complete.
Oh, okay. Thoughts, Peter? You're cool? Okay, so we're going to you?
We gotta, we gotta make a motion. Yeah, make a motion second and pass or deny the stormwater.
Okay, so on, oh, stormwater. I've got one more thing to read, I'm sorry. Has stormwater been met? I guess that's the question, right?
Am I satisfied?
I'm satisfied. Okay, I made the motion that, oh, stormwater has been met. Everybody want to second it? Is that right? Let's remove the second of the, oh, stormwater has been met, all those are favored.
One, two, three.
Okay. U. Okay, the notes from
This is.
May 12th, 23, and June 1st, 23. U are the same. And it says, U, conformity with local ordinances and plans. The applicant has requested a waiver from the requirement that state permits be received prior to town approval. They have asked that the state permit be made a condition of approval. We have no technical objection to this request. Last meeting, we rejected their request for this.
Do we want to revisit it? I think we kind of need to go, because the time is going to run out for these days. We're not going to meet that, so if you still want to do it.
That's a different issue.
Thoughts, Peter?
Well, I guess I see two options, either we can agree to an extension or revisit the waiver. And so I guess if there's a preference from the board, then we'll determine the next discussion.
We're all just shaking our heads here.
No? I think you guys already made this decision.
The waiver has been reviewed and denied.
And denied.
Okay. Unless the board wants to revisit that again, it's a done, it's a, it's a viewed issue.
We all need to revisit that.
Sounds like the board does not want to review this issue. Or revisit this issue.
I guess in that, in that case, I'd ask the board rather than deny the application to extend for 30 days until we get our DEP permit. If we don't have it in hands for the next meeting, then I can let you all know. If there aren't any other applications lined up, then we can spare everyone coming here and hearing in person.
You have the calendar, Joel?
Yes, we do.
Next meeting is?
The next meeting is the 21st of June?
And the one after that?
July 5th.
July 5th.
July 5th. So the, and the one after that would then be the 19th?
19th, yes.
So perhaps instead of just saying 30 days, you might want to pick a date?
Is it 30 days from today or 30 days from the time of the installation?
By section.
Pick a calendar date if you guys want to.
By section 3G and by section 1012C, the board had 30 days following a public hearing to approve approval conditions or deny the application. Or that, and that 30 days expires next week. There is an out that in a mutual agreement with the applicant and the planning board that they can be extended. And it does not define the term of extension.
With the effect of dating the extension?
So the applicant is certainly in a position to make a request to the board that the deadline for final approval for, of this project be extended beyond the 30-day limit to a date of his proposed choosing.
Yeah, I threw out the 30 days, but it sounds like you prefer to have a calendar date.
Well, I would prefer to have it a date that falls on a meeting, on a scheduled meeting date as opposed to this 30 days that falls really nearly sometime between meetings. Although I'm not keen on meeting on the 5th of July either.
I'm not going to think that's wrong. I'll have a new application.
I won't be here either.
Let's see, 30 days from the 17th of May.
No, 30 days from, there is no, the 30 days from the 17th of May is next week. And it has nothing to do with a mutual, mutual agreeable extension.
Good, but it'll work.
Oh, so the extension doesn't have to be 30 days?
No, the extension can be six months. What do you think, Peter?
If a date is, if a date of an upcoming meeting is the preference of the board, then I would just suggest the next meeting, which is June 21st.
We'll start with that one. So would you like to make a proposal to the board, please?
I would like to make a request that the board rather than deny the application, extend the timeline for approval to June 21st, at which time we'll present the DEP permit or request of an extension.
What was it, what was that, June what was it?
I mean, the 21st or next year.
Mr. Chairman, whereas the applicant has requested that we extend the deadline of the final review of this application beyond the 30-day.
beyond the thirty day mandated by the U D R O following the public hearing and has requested that it be extended to the twenty-first of June, I therefore move that we grant that request to the applicant.
Second, I move the second of that we extend the possible approval date to the twenty-first of June twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. All those in favor? One, two, three. All right.
Can you pull anybody further if this needs to be brought into the record?
Um, I have, uh, uh, a letter here addressed to me from Bambi Baker. And these are notes about the public hearing held on the seventeenth of May. And there are one, two, three pages in two different colors. And, um, I suppose we can handle this in two ways. I can either read the whole thing into the minutes of this meeting or I can just do it where I do it in a general documents.
I have no idea what's in that.
Well, I will read it into the minutes. How's that sound?
Yeah.
Okay. It says, "Mr. Gooch, here are my notes from the public hearing held May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. Thank you, Bambi Baker. Page one, section five, page twenty-one, traffic. The proposed development will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of highways or public roads existing or proposed. If the proposed development requires driveways or entrances onto the state aid highway through twenty-sixth Center of the Road to the center, to the skiway road. At this time, this should also contain the Monkey Brook Road." Why? Um. "The Department of Transportation has provided documentation indicating that the driveways or entrances conform to Title twenty-three, Section seven oh four, and any rule is adopted under that section." Oops. No? Ah, here we go, page two. That's section, section H. Stormwater management, section sixty-one, section thirteen, number five. "The storm drainage system will not adversely affect neighboring properties' downstream water quality or cause soil erosion. Whenever possible, onsite absorption of runoff water shall be utilized to minimize charges from the site. I would like the town to please continue to monitor this. So much vegetation has been removed. It stands to reason more water, organic, inorganic debris will wash off a mountain into the Center River, which could cause adverse conditions for the neighboring and downstream residents." Section X, page sixty-six, vehicular, vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Section five, page twenty-one. See traffic. "The proposed development will not cause unreasonable upset public." I'm on the wrong page. Here we go, page three. Um. X, vehicular, vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Number two. "Safeguard against hazards to, hazards to traffic of pedestrians on existing roads and to the development. People will walk wherever you want them to not, or not, whether you want them to or not. You need to provide lighting and adequate pathways. There isn't adequate lighting up at the south ridge." So you have.
Excuse me, Gooch. This was everything Bambi read during the public hearing. This has already been entered in the record.
No, I, they've been submitted for a while.
Yeah, they've been here.
So this is, but this has been read aloud already during a public hearing?
That's what I said, yeah.
That's what you read? Okay, so it doesn't need to be read.
Oh, oh, okay.
We thought this was new correspondence. It's not.
Yeah, okay. I was just doing what she told me.
No, I thought it was a new, I thought it was a new letter you got in your mailbox.
That's what I thought it was.
But it was on.
It's been there since the seventeenth.
Okay, that's what we did.
Really?
Yeah.
She did the eighteen, didn't she?
Oh.
Right, but it's already been.
It's already been in the record.
It's already in the record. Okay, so strike whatever I said. How's that sound?
Sure.
Um, what's next?
Um, I think.
Reports.
Follow the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you want, want to, if anything else before we say goodbye to Peter, follow the agenda.
Okay, Peter, it's your turn.
Do I leave the full-size stamped copies of the drawings or bring them back next time?
You want me to be responsible?
She has a fireproof safe.
I'll take them. That's where I know where our planning board stuff is.
The Blue Radley Plaza, um.
Anything else, Peter?
Nope.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
There you go. Thank you, guys.
Hopefully we can wrap it up next time.
I sure will, so. You too. As much as I enjoy coming here.
He'll be back, though. He'll be back.
He's coming back on the fifth of July.
For the very controversial application.
Want to put on nuclear what?
Oh, gosh.
Thank you, Dana Dan.
See you, Dana.
All right, have a good night, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, reports. Review the expert, to review the expert review inspection and performance monies held at escrow by the town. Review of Sunday River Resort, Baker and Merrill Hill projects.
So what? Regular accounting for any other business in the world except for municipalities, very easy to pull reports and look at things in a, in a chart-type form. We haven't figured out a way to do that yet in Trio, so there is no report on the expert review of the monies right now.
You're, you're, basically you're going to keep one outside of Trio, right?
We're going, we're, we're trying to figure out what that would look like and we may have somebody come in and help us on how that should look, on how, how we want to see that.
Well, Sunday, Sunday River is in its own cut board anyways, right?
No, they're not. For every project, whether it's New River or Sunday River, whatever the project is, we have escrow money.
Right.
And we have to have that in a non-interest bearing account and, but it's, it's just the accounting, the way we have, we have receivables, we have expenditures. The software we use of the municipality is, is the, is the coinkydink, is the, the fly in the ointment that we don't know how to get the reports out of. So we're going to call Trio and try to work on that and get that in a standardized form.
The sticky wicket here is that escrow money can't be combined with other escrow money. It has to be accounted for separately. So when we can, when we collect from an applicant escrow for the planning board, to assist the planning board in the review of the application, that amount of money has to be accounted for individually from other money that we collected from other applicants or even from the same applicant that we collect for a different purpose such as a third-party inspector. Okay, so for instance, on, on the Parker Mountain Lift application, we, the town collected eleven thousand dollars to assist the town in consulting fees when we were reviewing the application.
And did that also include?
In addition, in addition to that, the town is collecting funds separate to, for a third-party inspector that will be inspecting the job site doing construction.
So that's not the same money?
That, it cannot be the same money. It has to be accounted for separately.
So that can't just be done on, like an Excel spreadsheet with different, with different tabs?
Well, I think if, if we, if we can't get the accounting software to do it, then if we just need to do.
Yeah.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice if, if we weren't duplicating efforts. That we may not be able to do that to the, to the satisfaction that, that the town needs to be able to say, okay, Sunday or applicant A, you have so much money left in this escrow account. You have so much money in this escrow account, and this is how we inspect money in this escrow account. And you can't just put them all in, even though it might be the same organization, the same company, you just can't lump them all together. You have to account for them separately. And strictly speaking, once an application is approved, any money left over that the town collected to, for consulting fees for the review of the application has to be returned to the applicant. It can't, it can't be, oh, we'll just put it over here on this escrow account. You can't, we can't do that. You have to close it out.
I would make an Excel spreadsheet per application. And then, like in this application's case, it would have like multiple tabs for the different types of escrow.
I'll, I'll, I'll offer my expertise to.
We're going to work with it, don't mix it together and you can easily see.
We might already have that technology in Trio. We just don't know how to get it out of there.
Yeah, ideally, ideally it'd be nice to have it set up in the accounting system.
Right.
Correctly. As opposed to the accounting system says, oh, you've got, you've got X, Y, Z amount of money in escrow, but it doesn't tell you who, who, what, where.
Right.
Because it's important to, again, an applicant can have up to three separate escrow accounts for one application. The consulting fee for the review, the third-party inspection during construction, and a performance guarantee.
Yeah, especially if these aren't interest-bearing accounts. It seems like a syphilis.
And so all three of those have to be separately accounted for and not intermingled.
Right.
That's where the complexity comes in, trying to get up a accounting system that was set up years ago without that in mind, trying to bend it so it works in that conformance. Or as Becky says, fallback plan B is.
Excel.
An Excel spreadsheet or similar device, you know, ten column pad, whatever. And in the meantime, we are processing invoices.
Yes. Yeah.
And we are paying our consultant.
We're paying our consultant.
And to that effect, have we gotten any bills from EdVOT or EdVOT or?
AbCOG.
AbCOG.
And it's going to be valid. For what?
Well, supposedly their new line, their new planner was reviewing our.
We have not seen a bill separate for our U D R O review.
Okay. And no, I haven't gotten anything back from them on that either.
No, except she reformatted it into Word from what we had.
Right, well, that's her problem because now, now she'll have to deal with it.
Yep, yeah. Um, okay, so that's it for that report.
That's the only one we have listed.
Next agenda.
Six, open discussion, continue section five, section thirteen of the U D R O for applicant, application review coordination.
I'll be honest, I haven't had a lot of time for that with, with the spring building season ramping up and these applications coming through. But that is something that when we get back into the review process of the ordinance, I just keep it on there so we talk about it and it stays.
We'll table that.
Yes, please.
So, um, are there a lot of applications for building permits?
There are a lot of applications for building permits. Today I inspected the underslapped drainage for a ten thousand square foot house.
What?
And that's just the basement. That's not the first.
Basement is ten thousand square feet?
That's, and that's not the first and then the second floor, yeah.
So we're looking at thirty thousand square feet possible?
We're looking at double Balinski.
It's already been permitted.
Double Balinski.
It, it, there is some homes that are already in Newry, yes.
Although she's ten, something is ten thousand.
But we're not talking about her because she's not in front of us.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no idea who Balinski is.
Okay, good. Shush.
Okay.
She's still in the property in town.
Um, I do, I didn't make it on the agenda, but I got a late email from Goral Palmer if you'd like to talk about watershed studies real quick. Okay. We had sent them a request because of the questions that were asked at public hearings and, and subsequent meetings for the Merrill Hill project to look at the stormwater flows. So in order to do that, we are going all the way back to a project. I don't know if I can say the name. Can I say the name?
Sure.
Sure. We're going all the way back to Jordan Bowl when that was built, the hotel and the road, which used to be called the Jordan Access Road, not the Monkey Brook Road. So some of those permits, I talked to DEP. That is a manual search through records that would take months to get those DEP permits and plans out of the archive and sent to Goral Palmer. They, we've all looked online for this, for those types of records also. We can't get those either. We can't get them online. We can find the final decision of DEP, but not everything, not the hydro cad studies, not the plans. We can't get all that.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
What's a hydro cad?
Hydro cad is a software that is used by professional, by civil, civil engineers to calculate and estimate stormwater flow. And you put in a bunch of data points and assumptions and it comes back and gives you a very in-depth analysis of, of.
It's eight hundred pages of this.
And it, and it predicts, it predicts stormwater runoff, the duration of runoff, the intensity of the runoff, how quickly it, it, it.
Okay, John.
This is a copy of a DEP permit.
Okay, John.
I don't. Not numbered, thankfully. But this is just a calculation process as an example. It's hundreds and hundreds of pages of this.
This calculation that, that keep civil engineers use to determine culvert size, whether or not a detention pond is required, et cetera. And so it's, 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 it's actually a company that's over in, uh, in New Hampshire, just, uh, next to, to Conway.
Way above my pay grade.
It, it, it's for engineering. It's, it's to show water flow. Yeah.
But it, it's basically, it, it provides the information that professional engineers need in order to determine culvert size, culvert placement, detention ponds, et cetera.
Some pools, all kinds of things. Yeah. So in order for Goral Palmer to do that kind of study in relation to Merrill Hill lift two, just to see along with all the, all the, um, all the comments that we got from projects that are decades old, but downhill. What Goral Palmer would need for that is pretty much not available. I mean, it would take months and months. And I, you know, not, I'm not moving forward with this because, and number one, I'm not authorized to on my own. But, yeah, a pre-development hydro cad model, stormwater reports, culverts, cross-sections, monkey brook, who's at Glenn, all of these studies that were done for all those projects have to come together and get to our, our expert.
And then, and then the clock starts ticking.
And then the clock starts, it starts, right. And we all know DEP is short-stacked. I would be surprised if we saw all of this material come from them, their full DEP permits like this one in our hands within six months. I'd be surprised.
The, the challenge facing the town, and it's probably more in the area of the board, select board and code enforcement officer, is that we have many different projects dating back to the first one ever in the Sunday River Valley that are beginning to. that are beginning to add up and, and not necessarily being considered or, or where, or keeping up with the times. So does, does a hydrology for stormwater flow done back in the mid nineties for a project, is that still a valid assumption today?
So somewhere along the lines of my question about whether they did the study in nineteen ninety-eight, so why isn't, you know, when, when you update this?
We told you this would come up in the meeting.
So, so that, that, there's the, there's the, the, the challenge is, uh, in, in a given region of the town, where you have perhaps five, six, seven, eight different DEP permits for different stormwater systems, any one of them by themselves is probably properly engineered, but what's the cumulative effect?
Well, I was also thinking that the whole thing started in fifty-eight, and my father's a selectman at the time, and I was just a little kid, but I don't remember any discussion about permits of any sort.
And there was no ordinances, I mean subdivision in?
No, DEP didn't even exist for another fifteen years.
Right, yeah, seventy, seventy-four shoreline zoning kicked in, subdivision, what was seventy-one? So I mean, site plan, when did that, I don't even know when that started.
So, so the best that we, I think we can do is, as an application comes, is try to make sure that it's accounting for the existing conditions, and, and also as representatives of the town, be very concerned about what's happening downhill or downstream on other properties.
Because we've all seen the effects of it as that whole place got developed, you know, from, from where we live, you know, and, and, you know, the, the complaints of the river running brown, you know, from everything that happens uphill.
And it's not just, it's not just from that one hill, it's from, it starts all the way up, you know, if we want to, Riley and beyond, all of those three nets and, and several streets from it.
It's not just, it's not just that end of the town too.
No, it's this side too.
This side too, although it doesn't have a big resort to contend with.
No, it doesn't, so, anyway, I just, I wanted to share with you what Goral Palmer sent back to me, when I did send them one, but information, I found it, I'm sure they laughed and said, well, great, Joel, thanks, but? Yeah.
Please tell Goral Palmer that we are very happy with their?
Yeah, I will, I will, I'll tell them that the stormwater review of, you know, twenty-five-year-old permits, it will not move forward, okay? That's what I wanted to know. Okay.
Not, not from the planning boards.
Not, not today, okay, thank you, that's, that's what I needed to bring forward.
Well, the first time I went up Sunday River, you went up, what's now the access road to where the first ski shop you come to is?
That frost.
Yeah, and there was a gate, and it was closed, and you flipped to the left and followed the stream up, and then you came to a bridge, and you looked uphill from the bridge, and there were two very, very muddy ruts and a dream, and that's all there was. And we decided we didn't need to walk any further than those muddy ruts, turned around, came home.
Gerald, are there any new applications or any new business for next, for the next meeting?
I do not.
Okay, so the only thing that we have, and that's in two weeks' time, so today is the deadline for it, so the only item of all business is two seventy-five.
Here for Peter. Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the Wednesday, May seventh to June seventh, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the new replying board.
The rule consecutive, we adjourn until the twenty first of June at six thirty, all those in favor?
One, two, three.